Morris, if you will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
I will, sir. If I stand please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will, let us pray. Dear heaven and father, thank you for the many blessings we receive. Please give us the guidance to govern and do what's best for the citizens of Harney County. In that name we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir. Well, good morning, everybody. Before we get started, I had a request to add an item to the agenda. Vice Chairman Morris, if you would like to.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. It's a discussion about habitat for humanity and their disposal.
Okay, if we add that to J fourteen right above the county manager's report.
Fourteen A.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion, sir?
I would, sir.
Do I hear a second? Of a motion and a second in order to add discussion of disposable disposal for habitat humanity to the agenda. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll go ahead and add that to the agenda. Okay, we can get started now with the animal shelter needs assessment. Mr. Blevins.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. As I had, as you all passed out that that copy for you to look at, but I'll just go over the notes and if you have questions, we'll go from there. As you know, we started on that assessment back in September. We had met with Mr. Mike Bernard, the president of the company of Shelter Planters of America. And he came here on his last day in the in the area to speak with you all and kind of give a side of a briefing before he actually did the needs assessment. Or the the copy, I guess, the version that we all were looking at. So just as a recap, Shelter Planters of America advocates treating animals as a retail business. A shelter as a retail business that said more, if you treat it as a store, because you are really selling animals out, that it'll be more effective. And you will have more adoptions and more people involved in trying to do that. It's a welcoming community destination to increase adoptions. I mean, so with their experience, it shows that across the nation, a lot of that does happen. They did complete the assessment and and the conceptual design is based on a ten-year planning horizon from twenty-two to thirty-two. The conceptual design, you'll see it in a few minutes as she's putting it up, essentially, there's a there's room for expansion. One of the things that's a consideration is the size of a lot you put it on just for that particular piece. And if you've been to the shelter, you know that we're kind of boxed in and our problems for being when we're boxed in is usually because we have to get livestock. Of different sized chickens and those things and you need the space in order to keep them. So Shelter Planters of America developed a conceptual design based on the estimate of animals in the population and estimated population increases in Harney County. Again, in a ten-year span. So don't be surprised by how large the numbers are, the the shelter numbers are fairly large. And the animals that that is intended to house is fairly large. Right now, we don't we don't house that many animals. We try to keep it at a point where we can actually move animals in and out quickly. And so they don't stay there too long, and we always have to keep space open for those dogs, mostly for dogs and cats, in fact, bite animals that require space. And you have to plan for that space to be there just in case you get those kind of calls. Shelter Planters of America recommends having a kennel space for one hundred and thirty-five animals. Again, based on the population and the growth that's anticipated, the recommended total square foot is fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five feet. With twelve thousand one hundred and fifty of it conditioned. So the shelter includes obviously workspaces, office spaces for personnel. It does include a clinic of sorts for spay and neuter. And the reason we asked them particularly to include that is the only way that we can really get ahead at cost-effective efficiency and effectiveness is actually housing inside. That is the industry's trend. Whether or not you hire in the future a vet full-time or you do a part-time home contract, you'd at least have a place for them to work at. So and then the other piece is important to to think about is how you interact with the community and private nonprofits who want to help. Because those folks who help us are the ones that help us get animals out and our euthanasia rates stays low, you know. So when euthanasia rates go up, we all hear about it. So we want to try to follow that same scale. So there is a little bit of space for that. We do have a dangerous dog committee, and part of that part of that space could be used for that for that when they even have to meet. So the dangerous dog committee is required by general statutes for declaring a dog dangerous. So those estimates are what Shelter Planters of America wants, excuse me, recommends. We just got an updated cost, I think in January. So the the low estimate for a building of that size for a shelter is seven point six million. The high estimate's at nine point one to construct that. Going back a little bit, as I go back and think, we looked at three sites. One site was to keep it associated where we're at right now. The second site was behind. By the facilities building across the railroad tracks on the hill over there where it's wooded, all of them are county properties. And then the third one, which is their recommended site, was beside regional water. And there's pluses for all of them, and there's some minuses for others. I mean, the pluses, for example, for the one beside regional water, it's fairly clear lot. The other ones would have to be cleared in site prep and all those things, which those those costs are not in in this average or estimated cost. The site at regional water, the reason why that was recommended is because it is on a main thoroughfare of sorts. It's the main thoroughfare now. But where you can see the building, the curb appeal, it's welcoming and all this kind of things. It sees the access because of access already in the regional water, that kind of piece. Is there any questions so far?
I have a question. Regional water. Set down by, um, where is it located?
Harney Regional Water Utilities.
Oh, okay.
Probably side of their office.
Okay.
In that open area. So if you're looking at if you're looking at utilities, it's off to the right.
Is it larger than?
Yes. Yeah. It does have a slope, so they moved it up towards the front of the of the road. Because it does have a twelve-foot slope going going down towards the trails. And another reason why that was, as well as the site by facilities, was pit was chosen because of the trails. So you know, if you take, you want to adopt a dog, we'll let you take it out and walk trails, stuff like that. So it makes sense for, you know, as far as the industry and what we actually want to do. So I think that's an important piece. Regional water area, the reason that again is because of that curb appeal, people come in, it looks welcoming, those kind of things.
Mr. Brown, is, and this is, somebody's put a lot of work into this. I guess what I need to know, my constituents, is this going to carry us into the next thirty or forty years, or we're going to have to revisit this summary?
Again, it's estimated for ten, but I believe it would. I mean, we built the shelter we have now in early nineties.
By design, is it is it easily to add on to?
Yes.
That's the thing that I'd like to say is, you know, I realize with growth, we're going to have to expand and that kind of thing. But if we're going to spend the money, let's do enough to get us by.
And you can expand on this particular design. And again, this is a conceptual design. So you would actually need to go through actual RFQ to hire an architect, maybe in coordination with SPOA, maybe not. But using this conception, you would still you would still like to build that in.
Do you have some some large livestock areas? I just glanced at the diagram here, but I know we had the occasional cow, horse, or hog or something that gets picked up. Is there going to be a minimum amount of space for them?
Yes, yes, it's, let me find out where it's on the site plan.
Sorry, as long as you know it's there.
It's there, yeah, yeah. I'm just making sure I'm looking at the site plan. And again, you know, separated into two buildings, and the reason is the office and then the dog kennels in the back are the ones that. I mean, I, the technology now for animals, if you went into our shelter and looked at it, the water actually runs backwards. All the all the gates go, you know, inside, outside, the ones inside, outside. But anyway, the bottom line is, you can't protect yourself, you can't protect the animals. You have to run them outside to clean. The drainage is incorrect. So this all takes into consideration all those things. The most expensive, we were talking to the architect, the most expensive piece of a shelter is the plumbing. And then the floors, the floors where you have to have, we have a floor now that we we treated, I think, five years ago, which keeps bacteria and all that off. And there's nothing worse than a shelter if somebody gets sick. If one per one animal gets sick, it's a lot of it's a lot of hassle to to try to treat them all. Not sometimes you have to euthanize them. We have in the past, have to euthanize a lot of animals at one time. So what I'm saying is those costs are all built in, but the expansion piece is built in in this conception. And I mean, we we as a department would recommend using this conceptual design as going forward. As as the board and administration plan for for future CIP projects. And the estimated cost, again, is the highest right now, nine point one. I mean, it's steep to build a place to house animals. I get it, but.
This is going to sound kind of, got some more to deal with these snakes. I've had those before, we'd go on calls and it'd be a snake running loose in the house where it was a pet that got.
We deal with snakes. What we do is any kind of livestock, wildlife inside the house, Larry and his staff deals with, or outside, you're on your own. So if you get a bat in the house, we'll get that too. But yeah, anything you could think, we have dealt with very poisonous snakes. The snakes that were up in Raleigh whenever complaining about that, we had we had some of the same people down here with very highly poisonous snakes that got out and we had to deal with a couple of years back. We've actually trapped, that was before my time, we actually trapped alligators. So.
Yeah, we don't expect you to have a place.
Wildlife kind of takes that over now, so I'm very happy with.
Thank you very much for the update, sir. If they have any other questions or comments.
I just want to say, I'm glad to see you have in here a lobby, because you certainly don't have one now at the animal shelter.
It's a tough place.
It's a compact place.
Very compact, yep. And if you were down there on a certain day, you would you could, it's pretty rough smelling, just not for our animals.
I've been there several times.
That opens the next door, Mr. Trout. I'm assuming you have some long-range plans for that facility to do something with it.
Right. I mean, we'll we'll include what our options are if we determine that. I haven't haven't studied this specifically yet because we're not quite there, but we will determine a plan, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Mr. Larry Smith, you would like to come up and discuss the pilot animal foster program, please?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, fellas, commissioners. Right now, we have the proposed animal fostering policy. And on the animal services side, it's fairly simple. It describes what animals are eligible to be fostered, the requirements for a foster, an application process for a foster. And the foster-to-adopt program. The foster-to-adopt program is just a little different than regular fostering. If an animal's not eligible yet, they're too young, or they have an illness that requires long-term care, they can take that animal home in a foster status with intent to adopt it. They pay all the fees ahead of time, then they come back and legally adopt the animal when it's available. That's it's fairly simple on the animal service side. The legal aspect may be a little bit different. Is there any questions on this so far?
The only thing that was added from a, I guess, legal standpoint is we just wanted to kind of put a release in there. So if you're going to volunteer to foster, we appreciate you doing that, but you also need to accept some of the liability and take it off the county because the animal's going to be under your care and control. So that's what we really added there with with appendix B, which is the last page you have. It's pretty much just saying that you understand that you're going to be responsible for taking care of the animal, but ultimately, the animal still is under the care and custody of the county. And so if the animal's sick, you need to let us know. If you need to take it to the vet, you need to let us know and let us coordinate that. Furthermore, with the animal being in your house, you understand that there are inherent risks of having having an animal in your home. And if you have other animals that you, you know, you go ahead and take care of the, you know, appropriate measures to separate them if they they need be. And just make sure you're keeping an eye on them, keep, you know, whether it's around animals, kids, anything else like that. And that you understand that you're responsible for that animal while it's while it's in your home. And that's really all we've added as far as the the release form goes. You know, otherwise, it's, I believe it's the the only other appendix we had there was the application form, which I believe is a form that we've had for a while. Is that is that it? So really, nothing has changed with that. And, you know, just wanted to make sure we add an appendix B to make it clear in the policy that you are going to be expected to sign this if you do volunteer. And when you get an animal, you will have to sign this before you actually take one. So that's really, from a legal side, the only thing we've added to make sure we're protecting ourselves in the process.
Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Board, have any questions? Are you looking for us to do something with this with this now, or you guys have it complete, nailed down?
I think we're ready for you to consider approval next week at the board meeting if you're comfortable with the policies being created.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Do that one question. If you got something in there in the policy, adoption policy, about if a dog has violent tendencies, you can pull that dog out and not be adopted out.
What I tried to do is I looked at various foster programs throughout the state, both public and private. And pretty much working with Larry, we came up with a list of animals that would be suitable for fosters. And obviously, animals with behavior problems, they're not going to be in the program. That's going to be something that we're going to have to handle in-house.
You understand what I'm trying to avoid is putting a pit back out there in the fighting circuit rather than.
Absolutely, yeah. So we, that's that's part of the process is as we're looking at the animals, figure out which animals would be eligible, as well as which foster volunteer we could possibly pair that with.
Long as y'all have the authority to say no.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing. There is, I wanted to make sure, you know, going back through what Larry worked on, is I want to make sure that the volunteers understand that there is there is no right for them to get an animal. And if we say no, that's just the end of it.
That's good. You don't have to get down to weeds on it, but that's what I was looking for.
I do have one other question. Now, I understand this is a pilot program that we're trying to, you know, implement right now. Now, are there any other counties that have something similar to this?
Yes, there are several counties throughout the state, Wake, Cumberland, and a lot of counties out towards Asheville have this type of program.
So as pilot, it's pilot to us.
Yes.
Okay, so there are other counties. I believe that's it.
And we can report back to you in a year after implementation, give you some statistics, determine if you want it to continue. So if you would like that to be part of the approval process, prove it for a one-year pilot, do the analysis at the end of the year, and determine if you want to continue.
We'll put a one-year sundown clause in it, and we can revisit it in a year.
Yeah.
I think that's a good plan moving forward.
That's what I would agree to. That's what I would agree to.
Okay.
We, you guys like to put this on the consent agenda with that clause in it? Pleasure, and we'll add that to the consent agenda for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Arts Campo presentation, Mr. Blevins, you're up again.
Thank you once again. I'm gonna introduce to you Crystal Odom. She works with Campo, is a transit planner.
Transportation planner.
There you go. I'll make sure, I thought I was gonna say transit. She's been a great help in doing a lot of stuff. And let me just give a quick background. So we are gonna request the board endorse a letter after seeing the presentation and a brief discussion on it. So the whole process, the whole purpose of this is for human service transportation within the Campo region. Campo's established a lot of partners doing that, and moving forward, and she'll explain better than I can, but mobility management initiative is what this is. And again, it's focused on human service and transportation. Geared mostly with folks who don't get close to a fixed line, fixed route, and coordinate amongst other transportation providers in order to get a person to Raleigh or something to that effect, or anywhere within the Campo region. And I think it's important, it's a step next, it's a next step to help those that can't provide, get transportation easily. And I think it's a worthwhile effort on our part, is to at least to be a part of it. If you wanna know the truth, in my mind, and Crystal may disagree with me, but I think in the beginning that Hartz won't be involved in too much, except being a part of it and trying to figure out how we can be a part. But in order to be a part of the position that's gonna be housed in Campo, we'd like to be a part of it and ask the board to do that. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Crystal Odom. And thank you for coming, Crystal.
Thank you.
There's your clicker.
Let's see if I can get this working. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks, Barry. As Barry said, I'm a transportation planner with the Capital Area MPO. My name's Crystal Odom, and I am the project manager for our Mobility Management Implementation Study. And the purpose this morning is basically, let's see if I can get this moving, is basically to introduce or reintroduce you to our Mobility Management Implementation Study, and to really talk about the regional mobility management program, the framework that's been recommended today, recommended. And for those of you who did not participate in some of the meetings that we had at Campo the last year, we wanna go over what actually is mobility management, just to make certain that we all have a collective understanding of mobility management. We wanna talk a little bit this morning about what mobility management, what the Mobility Management Implementation Study was actually about, and what we've done in the study in this last year. It's actually a two-year study. We also wanna share the vision and goals this morning with you about the mobility management program, and talk a little bit about the outreach that we did, the outreach and the engagement activities that we took, that the region took part of in the last year. And then basically, we wanna share the framework, which the consultant has suggested, for this mobility management program. Again, it's a regional program. We wanna talk about the timeline, the source of funding, and basically, at the end of this presentation, we'd like your support, your endorsement of the framework for the mobility management program. So again, what is mobility management? Just so that we all have a collective understanding of what mobility management is. And I'm gonna read this directly off, because it's very important that we all, again, share the understanding. There's so many mobility management programs, that it's difficult sometimes for everyone to share one definition of what mobility management is. Mobility management is what the region actually makes of that mobility management program. But what is mobility management? Mobility management connects people with disabilities, seniors, low incomes, individuals, and others with accessible, reliable transportation options. So effective mobility management actually requires coordination and cooperation among a host of public and private partners. And you could see the partners in this diagram here, the various different types of partners that all would coordinate and communicate and cooperate. So the process of mobility management seeks to identify gaps and barriers to public transportation that prevents individuals from using existing services. So in practice, mobility management, a mobility management program is about making connections that fill gaps and remove barriers to transportation by coordinating information sharing and establishing clear processes for the public, for public transportation coordination. So all things, for example, mobility management would include having consistent information on agency websites, particularly when fixed route services are not available, establishing systems that refer clients to available resources, ensuring that all people of, over all the agencies, human service agencies, transportation providers, making certain that when they answer the phones, they give consistent information, that the information is up to date and accurate. Again, all this is brought about through mobility management and coordination. It's about convening the agencies and organizations regularly to improve their coordination and communication. This is mobility management. It's really helping to set the priorities for supportive programs and operational investments. So why is mobility management needed here in this region? So we know that we need more service. We also know that money, funds are limited. We know that demand is too low in the rural areas, parts of the rural areas, to sustain regular bus service. Part of the issue is, in our region, is there existing services that people are just not aware of as well. And we also think that there's a problem knowing what's out there, from the human service agencies, people that, the clients that come in that need to be served. Do they all understand what services are available, especially going from county to county, not just within, in one county? So we think that part of the solution is connecting people to the services that already exist. This is a prime, a prime example of what mobility management really is. We also think that coordination, more coordination and outreach will make a difference. Okay, I need to make sure my hand goes with my mouth. So what are the recommended strategy? So some of you might remember, maybe two years ago, we, Campo updated, the region updated the Coordinated Transportation Plan. That's what the Mobility Management Implementation Study was actually born out of. In the coordinated, the Coordinated Public Transit Human Service Transportation Plan, which by the way, is a requirement from FTA if we want to, if the region wants to obtain funds for our low-income elderly and disabled persons. So every five years, we have to update this plan. In the past, the plan was written as a part of the requirement, but we also, but individual agencies would work on the plan's recommendations. Well, in 2018, one of the recommendations that came out of the plan was to develop the infrastructure to continue the work of this plan. And again, the work is to coordinate public transit and human service agencies to identify the gaps in service and the needs of the region. And so with this plan, the Mobility Coordination Committee was identified, and that was the infrastructure that was set up to actually work through these plans, work through these gaps, and go through the recommendation to make certain that every five years, we actually progress and we actually address the needs of the people. The Mobility Coordination Committee, one of the goals, there were five, excuse me, out of the plan, there were five overall arching goals. One was to develop the infrastructure, as I spoke of. Two were to address the ADA, the region's ADA policies and procedures, and the practices of all the agencies. Third and fourthly, were to develop a mobility management program, to look at the rural areas and more of a mobility management infrastructure, which is more coordination and more discussion. And also, the fifth one was to follow the state's new non-Medicaid emergency transportation program. So with the third and fourth goals, the Mobility Coordination Committee realized that because of the size of our region and the need for so many agencies to be coordinated, both, again, the public transit and the human service agencies, all within the region, the Campo region, we thought it was important to engage a consultant. And this is where the Mobility Management Implementation Study was born. We invited all of the public transit agencies in Campo's planning area. Remember, Campo's planning area is beyond Wake County. It reaches into Granville and Franklin and also Johnston County. And so we invited human service agencies and also public transit agencies like Hartz, JCATs, of course, City of Raleigh, Go Triangle. All of these agencies have been working together to, on this mobility management study, as well as the MCC, the Mobility Coordination Committee. And again, this is a look at Campo's planning area. It encompasses more than Wake County, so that's why we're outreach to the rural areas and to the communities that provide transit services, and also the human service agencies within those county, the county, within our planning area. So the Mobility Management Implementation Study has actually two phases, as I spoke about. It's a two-year study. The first phase included work confirming the existing services that are in our planning area. We reviewed all the studies and plans that were pertaining to transit and to the needs of the transit needs. We also spoke with all of the agencies that make up the region. And we reviewed other mobility management programs. So we did a peer study to see what the best practices were, and to look at, again, some of the different types of mobility management programs that are around the country. We also did an outreach to, that included some of the boards, especially the Campo TCC and their executive board, where we gather, where all of the members, the jurisdictional members, got a chance to look at, look at what was proposed, and also to provide a little bit of feedback. We also had a, we had a couple of focus groups that included the public and also agencies that provided services, just to get feedback in terms of what was needed. So this is what kind of went into developing the Mobility Management Implementation Study, and what went into this framework that we're about to present today. So Phase Two of the study is actually going to be, for the agencies that endorse the program, coming up, we're going to do more of an operational, more of an operational dive in determining how we work together and what the coordination looks like. We're gonna be developing a job description, and we're also going to be developing a strategy for outreach to the public regarding this mobility management program. And then we'll have a final report summarizing the technical work that was done in the study. So again, this morning, we wanna talk a little bit about what the mobility management vision and goals are. And again, this is the framework that the consultant put together for our regional mobility management program. Looking at all that information and all that data, they came up with a framework that they thought would be, work best in this region. So the vision for the region's mobility management program is that it grows and evolves over time. So we're talking about delivering, delivering an improved public transportation information and services, including travel training for travel throughout the region, particularly in the rural areas. We're helping riders better connect to and use public transportation services, and that includes fixed route services, the traditional demand response, on-demand, such as some of the micro-transit services that are being started. And then we're also talking about, the vision is for us to streamline the process of finding travel options in the areas where fixed routes are not available. So who would, who will this help? The beneficiaries of the program include older adults, people with disabilities, and people with low incomes. It'll also help agencies and advocacy staff, and just people trying to provide services. There'll be more coordination and more information available, and over time, it'll be a more seamless process of getting this information. That's the vision for the program. So over time, we believe that through continuous improvement, more trips will be shared among providers, and there'll be accessible technology that'll improve the user's experience. Remember, our overall goal is to make certain that our constituents are able to access transportation in a more seamless, easier way. And this will, this program is also going to be able to inform future investments, what will we need? Again, the information will be shared. So the framework that was developed for this mobility management program is conceived as a five-year process. So in the first two years, the focus is gonna be on building partnerships with agency staff and other organizations, compiling information, and reaching out to individuals and organizations throughout the region. In the third and fourth year, it'll be based on data compilation, the lessons learned, feedback that's been obtained, and the program will likely be refined in order to provide more assistance to individuals, including travel training. And there'll be more support for agencies and organizational partners. In the fifth year and beyond, we believe that the focus will be more on improved access to technology, more trip sharing will take place, and we'll realize some cost efficiencies. So what are the goals of the program as developed in this framework? The program has three key goals, which will help establish the framework for implementation strategies. And so through engagement, outreach, and coordination, we're gonna offer consistent and easily accessible information on available public transportation services. Through data collection, needs assessment, and program design, we're gonna better address the concerns of people who face mobility challenges. And through program evaluation and refinement, we're gonna promote and improve coordination and use of technology among providers, leading to a better user experience again, and more transportation services, and reduced operating costs. So looking at outreach and feedback. So again, many of you participated in our prior presentations last year, where we introduced mobility management, and we also sought feedback on the study and the regional program. We wanted your initial, the stakeholders' initial thoughts on what they considered, or what you considered mobility management, and also what was needed in the region. The TSC, the Technical Steering Committee that we have for this study, actually held five meetings over the past year, plus, including a meeting in October, which was a workshop, where the TSC members, which was, again, parts of all the regional staffs, of all the different human service agencies and transportation providers. The TSC endorsed the vision, the goals, and the framework that you're being presented here today. So in the past summer, we also included, as I stated before, two focus groups, where we basically got their feedback, and we actually refined the initial thoughts on what was needed. One was to providers and advocates, and then one was to riders. And again, we use this feedback to shape the, this framework for the program. By the way, for the work that was completed in this Phase One, we have reports. That is this technical report, Task Seven report, that really outlines in detail what was happening, you know, what was the input that we got from the focus groups and all of the stakeholders. So what are the recommendations of this framework? What are we asking you to consider? So there are three key recommendations. So, there are three key recommendations. The first is to recruit a full-time mobility manager to start fiscal year 24, July 2023, thereabouts, and to serve the full region. This would be a Campbell employee that would report to agencies, to transit agencies, human service agencies, to really understand the services that are being provided, what's needed. It was recommended that the employee be, the mobility manager be a Campbell employee so they could rotate, so it would be regional and not, not focused on one agency, but regional and actually outreach to all of the different agencies. Their recommendation was also to use the Mobility Coordination Committee as the steering committee for this mobility management, mobility manager position. And this will require the Mobility Coordination Committee to be reformatted and, not reform, but to be formalized and reframed. And I'm actually the administrator for Campbell for the Mobility Coordination Committee, so we're fully aware, and we've been developing relationships for the last three years, so that's going well. And the third key recommendation was to actually fund this mobility management program with funds that are already coming into the Raleigh urbanized area. It's the 5310 funds used for low-income elderly and disabled passengers. And also, we estimate that it will be somewhere between 120,000 to 150,000 per year to pay for the salary benefits and, and some minor supplies and so forth. So, again, implementing, implementing the framework, it's developed around those key goals: engagement, outreach, and collaboration, data collection, needs assessment, and program design, and then, the third is program evaluation and refinement. Looking at the first goal, engagement, outreach, and collaboration, our strategies include partner engagement and coordination, which is basically relationship building, of course, development of the mobility management identity and brand, development of a publication of public materials that describe the program, and compile centralized transportation resources to be able to share. And then, the first goal also includes external promotion informed by forthcoming engagement in the marketing task that's in Part Two. It's important to note, again, I've been talking about public transit providers, but also the human service agencies. In addition, it's not, we're asking for agencies to endorse the program, but we do not intend to exclude agencies that don't endorse the program. But we do believe that a commitment upfront to participate and to support the program is important, so that's why we're asking for endorsement. We believe that all interested entities and all stakeholders have a, have a stake in improving mobility in our region, so we're asking everybody to participate. So, the second goal is data collection, needs assessment, and program design, and our strategies include developing a regional transportation information database. Where does everyone go to get the, the correct information, so that we're not telling the public different things? We're looking at having a dedicated mobility management webpage. We're looking at rider referrals. We're looking at data compilation and reporting on things like trends, number of clients served, the contacts made, again, the unmet, the unmet needs. All of this is information that would be shared. It's not to say that the agencies don't share information, but there'll be a central point for information to be shared, so everyone knows where to go for the latest information. There'll be somebody that's a mobility manager, manager that is responsible for making certain that the information is shared and coordinated. So, the third goal, program, is refining the program through evaluation, and the strategies include that travel training referrals, periodic meetings with boards and other decision makers to do, to report on the progress, refinement of the program based on the data and feedback, professional development and training for mobility managers. And we, we anticipate that there will be potentially other mobility managers in other regions that we'll be working with, again, to coordinate and to make certain that we're, we're making certain that all of the unmet needs are addressed. So, so what's the next steps in the schedule? So, as noted, we aim to roll out a mobility management program July, thereabouts, July, August of 2023. And we get, again, we're asking for your formal commitment through a written statement that endorses this proposed framework. And the, there's proposed language that's been provided, draft language that's been provided, that basically commits just to work with the mobility, that endorses the mobility management program and that this framework, and really pledges the agency to work with the mobility, work with the region, to work with the mobility management program, to direct staff to continue to work with the Mobility Coordination Committee. Basically, again, a written endorsement and approval of this, of this proposed framework. Going forward, we will be working, we are presenting to Campbell in the month of, excuse me, in the month of February and March, we are, we've been presenting to a board such as yourself and seeking endorsements. In March, we presented to, in February, we've presented to Campbell's TCC, and we're presenting to the executive board this week, in, just as information. In March, once all of the agencies endorse, we receive endorsements, we'll ask for the Campbell TCC and the Campbell Board to endorse this framework as well. So, right now, we have received endorsements from the town, written endorsements from the town of Apex, from Johnston, JCATs, Johnston County, Go Triangle. We were awaiting from Wake County. We presented in, in early February to their TAB, their Transit Advisory Board. We have reported, presented to the City of Raleigh's RTA, and of course, today, we're here at the Board, Harnett Board of Commissioners. And then, we also are reporting to the Town of Cary, and also, Hartz is, should be on there as well, scheduled, Hartz up at Carr Area Rapid Rural Transit. So, again, the future projects would be that Phase Two, which would be to go into further detail with the implementation on the steps, coordinating with the operators that endorse the program, specifically, so we see exactly what is required of this mobility manager to work with these agencies. And we will prepare a, an outreach plan for the public, and then, prepare also a final, a final report, so that we can wrap up the end of June. And again, we're seeking this board's endorsement of the framework for the mobility management program. We anticipate coming back before the board after Phase Two to really talk about in detail what the mobility manager, their job description, exactly what they will be doing as we've developed it during this last Phase Two. Thank you. I'll ask her any questions.
Ms. Crystal, does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but one of the main complaints that we hear concerning transportation is overcrowding roads. Jay and Mark, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know of a STIP project that's going to change that in the next 15, 20 years. With the growth that we're anticipating, well in excess of 10,000 lots in various stages of permitting, it's only going to get more crowded. We talk about wanting to bring in companies with jobs. Those companies are coming from places that have public transportation, and, and their employees expect public transportation. So, therefore, I recommend that we endorse this proposal wholeheartedly.
I certainly see the need for it here in Harnett County, because of the increase in population growth that we have here. But I have a question on the funding. Who funds this, and is there intermatching funds for Harnett County?
Great questions, thank you. The 5310 program is money that is a portion to the Raleigh urbanized area each year. And so, that program, we, we actually have a call, the City of Raleigh runs a call for project, they're the director recipient, they run a call for projects every two years. So, yes, there is an 80, it's a capital, mobility management is a capital expense, so it would be an 80, 20 split. We are examining, that's part of Phase Two as well, examining how to, to work, actually, I shouldn't say that we're working on that now, because the call for project is coming out at the end of February. So, we're working, we're looking for 80% from the actual 5310 program. There's a 20% match that we're looking at funding with the, the capital area, the dues that are paid into the Capital Area MPO, which, again, is regional and all the jurisdictions put into that, the dues, the membership dues. So, that's what we're looking at, but again, this is part of Phase Two. So, when we come back to you, we'll still say for certain, we are looking at the 5310 program, we are, this is the way we're, you know, we're looking to pay for it, whether or not we take the money off the top of the 5310 program, or whether or not we apply for it each year. We're looking at that right now, so thank you.
One more question. Even with that information and all, it still would depend on how many counties enter into the program for us to know exactly what the, what the complete funding for the county would be. Is that not right?
That's true. Again, we don't think this will be cost prohibitive. It'll be a nominal fee as part of your membership dues that you already pay into the Capital Area MPO.
And everybody will pay those dues to, to continue to be a member of Campbell?
Absolutely, so.
So, just for clarification, what I'm hearing is that the only thing right now you're requesting is an endorsement from the county as a participant to this program. It'll be funded through Campbell and other grants, and since you're taking the regional approach, it'll kind of be, it'll be looked at more favorable for those grants in the future.
We're asking for an endorsement of the framework of the mobility management program. It's not been completely worked out. The framework of those recommendations to hire a mobility manager, we still have to get permission to actually hire a mobility manager. We're just saying, looking for endorsement of that you like the framework, you like the way it's going, continue to work on this into Phase Two, and again, we'll be back in front of you. Again, when we ask Campbell for endorsement, it's endorsement of the framework. We will then have to go back later and ask for permission to hire the mobility manager. This is a permission to continue working on it, that the framework looks good to you, the idea that having a mobility manager is a good idea, the idea of it being housed at Campbell is a good idea, the fact that the Mobility Coordination Committee should be the oversight or the steering committee for this, this position. So, it's the framework. This is just Phase One.
Ms. Sotomayor, I appreciate you explaining that and appreciate Commissioner McCoy asking that question, because it was also one that I had as well. So, I'm assuming, following this discussion, that if we decide to support this today, the framework, that there will be a time going on when Phase Two is developed or whatever, that we will have a chance to then look at and see what that looks like before making a final decision going forward.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. One other question I had, it was on there that staff time involved, I'm assuming that would be Mr. Blevins' staff would be in the neighborhood of one to two hours per week. Is that correct? Is something that your staff would be involved with?
Yeah, so, we have been discussing that in the MCC. We anticipate it being one to two hours a week of just staff time coordination. That would be, again, when another phase comes up and we're actually working towards it. So, yes, I actually think it'd be a lot less, especially now at the beginning. Chance and I are on the committee, and that's, that's, we're doing heavy lifting as far as the hardest for that right now.
Right, right.
But I will say this, I think it's the environment, as we all know, with drivers and the resources that we have, anything we can do to help share that burden and that load is the right thing to do.
Agreed, agree with that. So, if I might just kind of summarize where I'm, I'm coming from at this point. So, basically, what we would probably be anticipating down the road with regard to that 20% match might be a slight increase in our dues that we would pay to Campbell each year.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. And I'd just like to say, too, the Mobility Coordination Committee that Barry and Chance participate in has been a wonderful addition to the region, in, in my opinion, because it's, it provides a forum for all the agents, agencies to really talk about what's happening at their agencies, how to address certain issues, to share, you know, obtaining drivers and the processes for doing so, and also, for the human service agencies to really understand what's happening in transit, and for us to work with the transit, excuse me, the human service agencies. So, there's been, already, there's been a sharing of information. This mobility manager position is really going to heighten that coordination, so very exciting time, actually.
Thank you. I do, I do see the value of that, and I do, I do see how it should be able to benefit our citizens in the Campbell region going forward.
And there is a report on Campbell's website for the, the last three years of the Mobility Coordination's work. It's called a short-term report, and it really speaks to some of the coordination that's happened, so.
Very good, thank you.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Once this, if this agreed to by all the different counties that you mentioned there, and we implement it in all the counties as well as in Harnett County, would there be a local committee here in the county to oversight, some review of what Campbell is doing? Because right now, it is hard to get the necessary information we need for our county from Campbell.
Okay. I'm not sure if you mean transportation information, but anytime you need any one of the Campbell transportation planners or the directors to come out and speak on a specific issue, we're more than happy to do so. So, if you share what, what you're looking for, I can tell you for the Mobility Management Implementation Study and also for the Mobility Coordination Committee, I do two presentations, generally, two presentations a year to give an update in terms of what's happening. Remember, the MCC is, is, is following through the recommendations in that plan, so it's a, it's a plan that actually has goals and recommendations, and so, to keep us on task and also to make certain that everybody in the county, in the region knows what's happening, we do provide updated information. But we can more than, more than willing to come out to Harnett and really speak directly to you.
Thank you.
Well, we do have Commissioner Wetherspoon's representation.
Yes.
I know, but I understand that, and I think he does a good job, but I think there's some stumbling blocks for him, too, as well, getting the necessary information that we need here in this county.
Yeah, we can always come out more directly here, that'd be fun.
I think one of the things later on our agenda is the approval of the Transportation Advisory Board, and I think they would be, I think that board would be very involved with this program as it moves forward. We've also asked for a survey of our citizens to find out how many, how many citizens, especially in the northwest and northern part of the county, how many, how many citizens, especially in the northwest and northern part of the county and Lillington area, would use mass transit. What do they want to see? And I think Barry's developing that survey right now. And what we're trying to figure out is how can we get people out of Harnett County to a connection point, most likely in Fuquay, to go to Raleigh-Kerry Research Triangle?
Barry can give you an update on that.
Yeah, speaking on that, I mean, the survey is out there, it's shared on social media. All the libraries in the county have it. We've got about 15 to 20 more days to get our results. And I do know people are participating because I do see this participation rates.
It'd be interesting to see how that survey turns out.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board? Would you like to add this to the consent agenda for endorsement?
I think I already made a motion that we endorse this program.
This is the pleasure of the board to go ahead and add this. If anybody's favored with that, we'll go ahead and add this to the consent agenda next week. Thank you very much.
That's needed.
Mr. Blevins, you still have the floor. NC DOT, IMD certifications?
Yeah, the certifications for the FY20, certifications and assurances for the FY24 application. I've asked Chance to kind of brief you on it as he's getting his feet wet and getting to know the grant process. So any questions will be standard, please, Chance.
Hey. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today to talk about the FY2024 grant application. We visited this back in November 2022. And it got approved by the board in the amount of $915,095 and a local match of $106,890. However, NC DOT, IMD revised the FY2024 funding request to a total amount to $796,023 with a local match of $106,66. So we're coming to you today to see can we get your approval and signature on the FY2024 grant application.
So they lowered the funding request?
Yes.
Questions? Pleasure of the board to add this to the consent agenda? Go ahead and add this to the consent agenda for next week. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Mr. Sykes, let's get you up here to discuss some, adding some roads to the secondary system.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Chairman, community board members. With us again this morning is a request for a resolution from NC DOT on some roads as, for the last couple of months. These are located in various areas of the county and some of them, the popular mills is down to 10 south, Anderson Creek School Road area. It's a really, really old subdivision. And, you know, as the development comes in, folks want to come in and build on those lots. So they're, they're actually bringing in some of the older roads. And then, of course, we've got some of the new ones, Woodgrove and Morgan North, which are just recently developed and they're following the process. So they're all over the place in the county, but this is definitely a good thing to proceed with NC DOT.
Very much. Any questions, comments, concerns from Mr. Sykes? It's the pleasure of the board. We'll add this to the consent agenda as well next week? No issues? Go ahead and add that. Madam Clerk, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Mr. Roush, would you like to come up and talk to us about tuberculosis funding?
We've got $2,000 from the feds in the state to add to our TB budget. It's for screening the Ukraine refugees, if we were to have any of those. State got some federal money for that. So it's to go to help with just going our regular screening budgets for x-rays, that type of stuff. We needed it. $2,035, of course.
Any issues accepting this money? We'll go ahead and add that to the consent agenda as well, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much, sir. The other Larry Smith, would you like to come up and talk firearms?
I'm coming in front of you this morning to get approval of the Campbell University's schedule for the spring fireworks schedule. We've reviewed the plan from Pyro Show's East Coast. FM, my planner, has reviewed all that and meets all the safety requirements, all the code requirements. Those present, those actual fireworks shoots are on March 17th, the 31st, April 21st, and May 12th for the spring. We call it fireworks season. They call it baseball season. Any questions?
Any questions? Any issue on approval?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, we'll add that as well. All right. It's Christine Wallace. You want to talk to us about reports of unpaid taxes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So each February, I'm required to report to you all the amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year. And this is in accordance with the general statutes. And so to give a little background and a little information, last July, we billed 69,391 parcels with a levy amount of over $65 million. And so the unpaid taxes for the 2223 fiscal year, as of January 31st, is about $3,347,987. This is about 5% of the current levy and this creates the lien of unpaid taxes on real property. So the delinquent taxpayers have already received their second notices at the end of January. And in that was the amount due along with February's interest. It also notifies them that without payment, they would have the possibility of being advertised in the newspaper. So the advertising of the tax lien must also be posted at the courthouse. And that is subject to space and time restraints on the bulletin board. And I'll talk to the clerk about that. We'd like to leave it there for about 10 days and then at least once in a county circulated newspaper. So the list is also going to be made available on the tax department website. And advertisement is required to take place between March and June. At this time, we plan to make advertisement during the month of April. So what I'm requesting is that with your approval, we may follow through with that advertisement and for the fiscal year 2223 unpaid taxes as required by statute. Any questions?
Questions? Comments? Anybody have an issue adding this advertisement to the consent agenda?
I don't, I don't have any question. I would be curious, how does that relate to past years?
Past years, I think it's up from last year. I know I'm uncertain of the year before. But we are collecting more money on more parcels than we were last year. I believe our parcel count is up 2,690 parcels from last year and over 3,000 from the year before.
Thanks.
All right. Thank y'all.
Nonprofit funding agreements. Sally Fouts.
Good morning. Before you today are three more funding agreements with three more organizations receiving a bit of the $1.5 million from the state. So we have, I believe, four or five left that we are still awaiting funding agreements. And I'm hoping they will be with us. They will come our way soon. But today is the Harnett County Chiefs Association, Harnett County Education Foundation, and the Town of Irwin. So with the board's approval, we will be able to execute these contracts and appropriate the funding to these organizations.
Question?
Thank you.
An answer report. Monica.
All right. So I'm coming before you this morning to review the monthly financials. Actually, it's a quarterly review. I placed the copies at your table. They're marked item 12. There's two items at your placeholder that I'd like to discuss. And I'll make it sort of brief and my apologies. I'm trying to get over a cold, so I don't want to start coughing. But just in summary, the monthly financial reports are actually placed in your packages each month and they are made available online. And then each quarter, I come to you and point out, you know, kind of give you benchmarks about, you know, where we are in terms of revenue and expenditures. And for your convenience, I have placed copies of just the general fund and then Harnett Regional and Solid Waste because those are our three main operating funds as well as our sales tax analysis articles. So that way, my review today is going to touch briefly on those pages. So just for easy reference item. In summary, the general fund avalorum collection of sales tax was, excuse me, of tax was 9% above the same time last year. As of the end of January 2023, the county had collected 96.45% of the avalorum tax budgeted. And just keep in mind, last week you heard from our auditor, Matt Braswell with Martin Starnes, who stated that our collection rate, our defined calculated collection rate was 99.46% of our sales, of our avalorum property tax. So we are tracking to meet or exceed that goal for this year. In addition, the tax collection rate for fiscal year ending 2022 was 99.46, which was actually up from 99.44% of the prior year. So to follow on Christine's comment, you know, we are returning back to pre-pandemic collection. And Harnett County has always had a very high collection rate, which is very, very outstanding. Next, sales tax continues to be very stable. Sales tax for the second quarter is 23% above the same period of last year. I know there's been a lot of discussion in the media about, you know, was sales tax sustainable during that pandemic? And we fortunately have been able to maintain that and we continue to see a little growth with, you know, stores opening up. And then for your, for additional information, there's a sales tax analysis article where we take the current year, how we're tracking compared to last year in total. And a lot goes into that collection of that sales tax. Some of that is restricted for education and debt services. So we, we push that over into a separate fund. There are some that we have to remit to the fire districts because of the, we participate in an avalorum collection. So you will see that as well. So that just gives you an idea as by month, you can kind of see where we are compared month to month. The information for the prior months is actually kind of grayed out. So if you kind of want to compare month to month, you can see that if we've not already gone into that area. So in summary, for the comparison of the quarter ending December the 31st, 2022, with this same period of last year, our general fund revenue is up 15.41% and our general fund expenditures are up 5.7%. So right now, we're tracking very well. Keep in mind, we're still three months behind in the sales tax. So when we close our year, we still have three months of sales tax. But right now, we're doing pretty well. But also keep in mind that the bulk of our revenue is our sales, is our avalorum property tax. And we've collected the bulk of that now. So you should start to see that revenue kind of level out. I'll just touch briefly on Harnett Regional Water. For the full report, they are on page nine. Revenues reported through December the 31st of 2022 totaled 22.5 million, which was an increase of 3.21% from the same period last year of 21.8 million. And facility fees, and that's the rates, the fees that they collect on their services, represents roughly about 94% of their current budget. Overall, their financial position continues to remain positive. Their expenditures were actually up about 9%. So there's a little more expenditures. And when I went back and did a little further digging in, most of that seems to center around the water treatment and distribution. So that's to be expected. For Solid Waste, revenues reported through December the 31st of 2022 totaled 5.9 million, which was an increase of 8.72 from the same period of last year. Revenues from their facility fees represent about 61% of their budget. And their operating expenditures are actually up 7%. So they're running a little bit higher on their revenues. So overall, Solid Waste continues to maintain a solid financial picture. And if you'll remember from the planning retreat we had just a few weeks ago, Solid Waste over the last 10 years has made, has gained significant ground in their revenue generation, being able to update their facilities, being able to invest in capital. They no longer have a need to actually borrow money to buy the equipment that they need to continue those landfill operations. And that is very, very positive for them. And so I will tell you that the, this complete report is not in your package today, but it is online and will be in your package for the board meeting. But we always put these online. So if you have any questions, please let me know. The other discussion that I laid in front of your placeholder was the, in your fiscal policy, it directs that your finance officer report to you the fund balance, fund balance analysis. And to go back to Matt's presentation last week, fund balance is a calculation that is done once a year on June 30th. And that is the true mark that we have to, to measure and gauge ourselves. So the purpose of our monthly financial reports is to, to give you an idea of when, when we calculate that fund balance and we produce that report, those are our measurement data points. And then the further we get from that collection or that collection of that data and move on, you can kind of gauge where we are in comparison. So that when we get to the next June 30th time period, it'll give you an idea of, you know, policies and procedures, decisions that you've made, how that has impacted the overall financial position of the county. So what I'm going to bring to you today is just a recap. Our unassigned fund balance as of fiscal year ending 2022 was 41.6 million. Total expenditures were 142.8 million. It transfers out of 976,000, bringing your unassigned fund balance, and I apologize, there's a typo, to 28.97%. So now, to give you an idea, we have, we used fund balance to balance our budget that was adopted on July 1. We have continued to appropriate or reduce our fund balance appropriation based on activity of the county. So what I've done is I've taken that measurement and then I've calculated additional appropriations from fund balance. So as of today, if we were to take that calculated number, we can get an approximated ending fund balance right now of 27.6%. And keep in mind that your fiscal policy directs that you will maintain an unassigned fund balance of between 15 and 20%. With any percentage over going to a very defined list, whether it's the pay down of debt, whether it's investment of capital, or if it's for one-time uses. I would recommend that as we develop our budget, as we're going into our budget, that you may want to consider, and this is just a conversation for later, that you may want to consider upping that, that cap, maybe up to above your 20%. I think in the, over the last two years, more especially the last 12 months, you've seen quite a bit of, as the county and the nation's trying to recover, we've seen a lot of increases just from what Mr. Blevins reported with the animal facility. You know, that cost has gone up or the projected construction cost has gone up exponentially from just October to January. So that, so to give you more of an operating type room, you may want to consider increasing that upward end of that fund balance. So that way, when we are addressing personnel shortages, when we are addressing issues where, you know, more funding is needed for the daily operating budget, you will have that and you'll know that you've not bumbled over your floor. But in the meantime, we will still continue to transfer money over to your debt fund, to the health insurance, so that all of those reoccurring bills are continuing to get paid. And I know I talked very fast, I think. I felt like I was yelling.
Were you not? What? You yelled. You didn't yell.
I was trying to use my indoor voice. It's very, I will tell you, it's very intimidating to stand here and talk to you. I could talk to you all day long over there, but this is, this is terrible, y'all.
When I hear a plus.
So what we will do is, like I stated, we will start putting those monthly reports in there. I think it's about 33 pages in totality. I did not make a copy and put in front of your, your space. I did not make a copy and, uh, put in front of your, your space, but that's always available online for the citizens, and that is part of the tr- the financial transparency that, um, that our rating agencies want to see, that, uh, just is a, it's just a good framework of government, um, so that you are, um, familiar. And if there's anything that, you know, you would like to see, something you would like to see different, if there's any questions, you know, please let me know. I'll be more than happy to assist any way I can.
Good job. Everybody has any questions? We'll move on to, uh, applications to serve on boards and committees. Commissioners, you have a packet in front of you with some applications. I'd like to take a moment to look through those. See, we have an application for the Transportation Advisory Board from, uh, Miss McGaney. Uh, address is Houston. Is this not a district-sensitive position? Also have a application for Ms. Roseanne Tinete. I believe she is, is she in District One?
No, she's in District Four, I think.
Four?
I know her. She's been way on the server on that board, you know.
We have a District Two application for the Library Board of Trustees. Vice Chairman Morris, have you, uh, a chance, or do you know this individual?
I'm, I'm looking forward on here now. Um... Yeah, I think so. No, no issues at all.
What I have here is a Tax Board, uh, Mr. William Dan Andrews.
I endorse him.
I have a resignation from Miss Tracy Honeycutt. Bring to agent. No, uh, Miss Patricia Pierce Dutton, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any issues with any of these, uh, current appointments or applications?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
One thing, we also, the Transportation Advisory Board, that long list, those are there for reappointments. So we need to, at the next meeting, approve the reappointment of all those individuals that are highlighted from Mr. Blevins, Davis, Gilchrist, so on down the line. Those all, those all need to be approved as well at the next meeting.
Let the commissioners take a look at that list real quick, and if they have any issues, or...
Next week.
Fine with those reappointments as well? Good with that?
I think that board's awful big.
Well, hearing no issues with the applications and this resignation, pleasure of the board to go ahead and approve these and put it on the consent agenda for next week. Hearing no objection, we'll go ahead and put that on for the consent agenda.
Thank you, guys.
All right. That'll bring us to, uh, item number, new item fourteen, uh, Discussion for Habitat Humanity. Uh, Vice Chairman Morris, if you'd like to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, uh, contacted by the Restore Committee Chairman, Mr. Jackson. And what happens is folks will donate whole housefuls of stuff for the Restore, and they end up, uh, some of it can't be sold, it has to be thrown away. And they're averaging about twelve hundred dollars a year in tipping fees. And, you know, they take these dollars and build houses and stuff, and they're typically on lots that have not been developed, sit there for years. And so we're actually making money off of the increased tax value of the new house. And they've asked if we would consider waiving the tipping fees up to twelve hundred dollars a year, because this is stuff that would typically be put out to be picked up on or, or taken for normal trash disposal, anyhow, for household goods. So that was, uh, the reason why I put it on there. It just came up this week, and they brought me a letter on it, and I have a copy for the clerk. But, uh, that's where we're at with it.
Ms. Fouts, didn't Habitat Humanity get a grant from Senator Bergen?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I cannot remember if it was twenty-five or fifty thousand.
It was, it was one of the two.
It was twenty-five thousand, and it's for the next build in Harnett County.
I'm hoping what they'll do is build another house, because we go from a fifteen thousand dollar lot to a two hundred thousand dollar house that we're collecting taxes on.
Right.
So thanks, Senator Bergen, for supporting them on that.
Yeah.
My point is, they've got money to pay twelve hundred dollar tipping fee.
Well, first of all, I'd like to have Deputy Manager Coley put, uh, provide some information on the process that we have to do in order to do what you've requested.
Good morning, chair members of the board. Hope everybody's doing well. Um, totally understand your request, just the process that you need to kind of look at is, since the good report that Miss Honeycutt gave you on the Solid Waste, it is an enterprise fund, so it should be self-supporting. They've come a long ways over the last ten years, as she mentioned. Uh, if you want to as a board, it's totally up to you. But what you have to do is, uh, let us collect the tickets and come back before you, and then we total those tickets, and then she has to do a budget amendment to pull money out of the general fund to self-support back to the enterprise fund. And that's just the process as far as the way that the, that the board is, that the department is set up. So totally up to you as a board, how you want to move that, but that fee has got to be paid one way or another.
So typically, it would be a re- if you would approve to, uh, it would be a reimbursement. So the general fund and to, to, uh, comment on your, your, your point, uh, Vice Chairman, yes, the county is getting money from there, but it's the county fund that's getting the, the money from the taxes. Solid Waste is an enterprise fund, it's, it's self-supporting, so... And it, so in the past, just to make Solid Waste whole, there is a, there is a line item in your budget, uh, where when, when items like that are approved, we will, uh, reimburse the individual for that or the organization for those fees. But then, um, uh, that money will, uh, in other words, Solid Waste has collected those fees, and then you as a board, you, uh, reimburse those fees if, if it's approved to do so. But just waiving that, uh, so that they're not going in. And then that way, when we are looking at analyzing the, the activity of that Solid Waste to make sure that the revenues that, or the fees that they are charging is sufficient to maintain, and I know twelve hundred dollars in, you know, an organization, uh, of some size is just a drop in the bucket, but it, it, it maintains a standard of, of operation. So there is a procedure that, that we've tried to follow. And then that helps you during budget time to see, you know, what has been done. And it helps you keep up with, you know, in two or three years, you know, who have we done in the past? You know, how much was that? It really gives you, it provides a lot of feedback, because if they're just going up there, you know, you know, I'm with so-and-so, and it's waived, you have absolutely no data to know what they're doing, you know, to, to, to understand the impact on that system. So that, that's a procedure that we have kind of developed.
However, we need to juggle the accounting on, you see what we're trying to accomplish?
Absolutely.
Whatever the process will do to accomplish that.
Absolutely.
What happens when the next nonprofit comes along? I mean, we're opening a can of worms here, and we, two years ago, voted not fund any nonprofits, and this is funding Habitat. I'm all about Habitat. I served on the board.
Me too.
But, um, we got to be very careful. We're walking a fine line.
Doesn't, doesn't really sound like we're funding it.
I want to say something. Um, I don't think we should start a process of bringing stuff and adding to the, the agenda here on this bench. There are other ways to add things, rather than bringing it to us here while we're sitting here. Uh, I, 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 I just don't like that, where we continue to add to the agenda. Get it to the agenda before we get here on the bench. I think that's the proper process.
I didn't see it being an issue in order to address this now, instead of kicking it. But if, if that's the pleasure of the board, then we can start sticking to exactly what's on the agenda, unless it's something that's absolutely time-sensitive. Um, we can just continue to look into this. I understand that it's, uh, see where your sentiments are. However, I don't think it's really funding, and it's a matter of, this will be a way to help a nonprofit without actually giving them out.
Well, let me say this. You said helping nonprofit? When we were getting the nonprofits together two years ago, y'all said no, no more funding at all for nonprofits.
That's right.
And you put me on the spot, and you used me, when I have been doing it for years.
Mr. Chair, um, let's, I'm gonna make a suggestion that we put it on the February twenty-eighth work session for further discussion.
Amen.
And in the meantime, uh, may, maybe we could have some historical information as far as, you know, what, what has been done in the past with regards to waiving tipping fees or not waiving tipping fees. I think that'd be good information for us.
Rest of the board agree with that? Maybe we'll go ahead and add that to the twenty-eighth agenda work session?
Yep.
Bring us up to the County Manager's Board, Mr. Trout.
I have nothing to add today. Covered a lot already in a busy meeting.
Jordan Sweet. Mr. Snow, do we have a need for a closed session?
We do. We do? Yes. Uh, I move, uh, in accordance with North County General Statute, Section one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A five, that we go into closed session, um, to instruct the county staff concerning the position to be taken by the county in negotiating a contract for the acquisition of real property.
Motion for closed session?
If I move.
A motion and second for closed session. Please say aye. We're now in closed session.